Welcome to the Coffee Ice, ISB 701, the Henry Mitchell Board Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody here. A couple announcements if you can keep the TV, keep the noise in our back at a minimum. And if anybody is going to speak, please step up. There's podium.
Put your phones away.
And it's 3:30 PM on October 8th, and the meeting's in the boardroom. With that, we'll move to way of two. Fledgling allegiance, please stand in motion.
Fledgling allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the power of our wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine of justice, law,
Thank you. Would that move to way of three?
We have no public comment today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Would that move to way of four? Administrative reports? Anything from the directors?
Chair? Over the weekend, US Representative Angie Craig was in town. And so I tried to connect up and make sure she stopped at our high school. And she did. And I just don't care what part of the, what side of the aisle a person is on, if we have a chance to advocate for public education. I think it's important. And she and her staff cannot say nothing about this school. And I think are interested in coming back at some point in time.
Very good. Thank you. Would that move, the student director is not here?
Mr. He's in Vermigie. He stopped and saw me today. He's at some of them, something type of school in Vermigie.
Good. And you give us your report next to him?
Yes.
And be it administrators and staff.
Yep, thank you. We're starting with Mr. Berg from Washington. Welcome, Mr. Berg.
Yes, thank you. And we have our district leadership team from the Washington with me today. And we're going to highlight some of the priorities that we're working on that align with our district priorities this year. Just to kind of give you an insight into kind of what our focus is this year and things that we're working on. So I'd like to start us off here with the social emotional learning priority or SEL. We are kind of in year two of this. We somewhat piloted this last year. Use of everyday speech as a curriculum. It is a technology curriculum that's used. In tier one instruction that all students get, Ms. Violet is able to teach that throughout the library sessions she has with the kids. Those are things that they will see and be a part of on a weekly basis. Those lessons go throughout the year. Our teaching staff also have access to that and can do follow-up lessons as needed. As we move into our tier two and three instructional area, this is more of a targeted service. Our special education staff, our counselor, they have access to this product, the social communication curriculum. And it really is tailored to individuals, small groups, a lot of video modeling, follow-up activities. Also present them with IEP goals as a bank and a data tracking tool that they can use within their setting. And Ed Revale introduces themselves as they come on.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Hobert. I'm a first grade teacher as well as leadership team. The second thing we're changing this year or adding to is our management time, which is focused for those tier two kids. When stands for what I need. It's the core, which is all students are getting that core curriculum. And then this is the more, this is the daily dive in what they need. We are using our FastBridge data, formative and summative assessments, and then our breakout meetings that happen regularly to determine where kids should be placed. And then we are also using time to collaborate and decide what they are going to be doing within that time. And we're using our curriculums to support what the kids need.
Do you hear her turn over to the other side?
Here, right here.
Yeah. Or down.
Hi, I'm Elinda Rusic, and I teach kindergarten over at Washington. I'm going to speak on collaborative link teams, tier two and tier three. So what this is, is that we have meetings held twice a month. There's staff representatives from all kinds of buildings. So there's a kindergarten teacher, representative of first grade, special education, administration in the North Homes. Anybody, there's a representative from each facet of our building. They're as the representative to hear the information that's provided. That it's a collaborative, intentional, and professional group that works to help support student achievement and break down barriers to student success. Some of the areas that we talk about is kids are struggling with maybe reading math, behavior, or SEL attendance, things like that. Though all of those things are discussed in these meetings. And then we brainstorm and we decide on different interventions to help support student success. And I think that this year, the change of having representatives from all of the different facets of our building makes it a more team approach. And everybody's, you know, invested in it. And then you have more resources and more people to go to when you are looking for extra interventions or some extra help if you study.
All right. I'm Angela Rabel. I teach first grade. And I'll touch on tier three. So these meetings happen once per month. Data is reviewed, and then consideration is taken into consideration for special education services. And then the interventions that they're provided with. The DLP is supported by data that'll be collected in the classroom. And then this has been happening for a while now. So it's just my version of the meeting experience from years up the way through. And then this year, we're going to continue to refine our process even more and implement a district-wide tracking chart. And then include more staff to our decision-making process for meetings.
I am Danielle Zubich. I'm the elementary fire teacher at Washington and Greenhaven. And I'm going to be talking about our evaluations. So we have our 65% of our summative evaluation, which is going to be from your admin, I believe, correct? And then, so this is going to be the same with our admin and our peer review. We are going to have our formal classroom observations, reflective conversations based on our Individual Growth Development Plan. Pre-conference, post-conference, teacher room book note taking, and our classroom walkthroughs, which is going to, let's talk with our colleagues on how they saw our lesson as the helpful sites to see that.
All right. And our next slide is our FastBridge results from this fall. So we do this right away at the beginning of the year. And you can see here, oh, this is 24, 25. So the district reading roll at or above the 50th percentile in the fall of 36. And we're shooting for by spring to get up to 40% of kids at or above the 50th percentile. This fall, we had 64 below the 50th percentile. This is district one. And we're hoping to have less, 50%. And then you can see down below the A readings, what first grade, I'm sorry. Everyone, K1 takes early reading, but first grade or second through 12th grade takes the district A reading. You can see those numbers there, 50 percentile for above the 50th percentile. And we're hoping for the spring to have 54. Those are our projected goals. And then below the 50th percentile, you can see those numbers there.
And it's actually data from this year?
This year.
And then our math data. So in the fall, for that K1 group, again, the early math, we had 52% that were at or above. And our goal for spring is 55. The below was 48, and we hope to decrease back to 45. Then when it comes to the older, the 7th through 12th grade, there were 56 at or above the 50th, and we hope to increase that to 56. And I do want to just add a little caveat that that might not seem like a huge goal. The change is that each time the test is given, the test changes. So although the growth is little, we are just hoping to get growth so that the kiddos are, more kiddos are meeting or exceeding versus going down. And we don't want to focus on having a bit lofty goal that's not attainable.
That's it from the Washington. Any questions?
It was nice having everybody attend today. So I appreciate everybody taking the time.
Thank you. It's a great career to work with.
DJ, just one question. Could you go back one slide to the?
Yeah.
So that should say 25?
25, 26.
Okay. And then, so district early reading, does, is this love all of our kindergartners and first graders in one group? Is that what this is?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. What, I'm just curious, what does it look like when you break out kindergarten and first? Have we done that, Carrie, or?
It's actually kind of interesting because we do have that breakout. Our kindergartners coming in this year scored higher in the fall than our first graders did for their test in the fall.
Okay.
I think we're starting to see some of that progression out of COVID here finally. One of the reasons. I think the efforts down at the Early Learning Center, the number of kids that we've had enrolled there have helped. Just making those contacts early on is truly helped a lot to get them more ready for K coming in, so.
So that test you take, this is, did we test first week of school? Second week of school?
We have a three-week window that we started in September, finished up the first part of October.
Okay.
To make sure everybody gets an opportunity to test. It's, every staff member that has a classroom, it's a full day of testing for them to get through both math and reading.
So it's a snapshot, right? Where want to find out where they're at? They came back from the summer, or maybe they're just going to want to find out where they're at. And then the goal is, right, we'll test again. Do we check in, Carrie, is that right? We check in again in the winter one time? Okay. Okay. And that's, is that not as extensive of assessment?
We have three screenings per year.
Okay.
And as Jess Hoberg alluded to earlier, when you look at the early reading, early math, that test gets progressive as the year goes on. And we're actually in reading, we're testing different things. Where at the beginning of the year, you might be testing letter recognition. Where down the road, you might be testing decoding skills of nonsense words, which is a pretty difficult skill for most. But it helps us, I like to think that as a doctor's visit, you go in, this is a checkup. We're going to see you again in the winter, where you at? And then again in the spring, how are you doing? Based on our interventions throughout the year, obviously, we'd like to see progress. You know, last year, we even had some times where we dipped during the year. So even from fall to spring, we saw regression of scores. Doesn't mean students weren't progressing though.
Can I clarify? Did you say that this year's kindergartners in the fall tested at a higher, to a higher, at a more that were at or above the 50th percentile than last year's kindergartners and all our first graders?
Correct. And that's looking at those students' fall tests this year. So kindergarten percentages, those that attain the 50th percentile, more students achieve that this year in that September window than the first graders did on theirs in that same window.
As first graders? Okay.
Eventually, we'd like to see that progression going up every year. So obviously, our goal is, and that's really where it comes down to, is how big a growth did we get to see throughout our current year? But we do have those spot checks. And even between those spot checks of benchmarks, fall, winter, spring, some students may be progress monitored every two to three weeks in that window as well.
What's wingtime look like? And just what's that with the new classroom? That's a new concept to me, I'm sure.
And I don't, if you guys want to explain too, but we have sectioned out specific time during the day, about a 30-minute window that students are in their levels of achievement. So now that teacher that's teaching the high group, I'm just going to take three sections to make it simple. But one teacher may be teaching the high group. They get to plan for that group. Much different than preparing for those that are on the other extreme, the lower group. During that time, we have title teachers that are also taking students for assistance and support for reading or, well, mainly reading. And then you have kind of the middle group. In kindergarten, we have a group of three and a group of four. But they spend a lot of time going over the data, kind of segregating students out into areas that they can target with skills and small groups within that time. Anything you guys want to add to that?
Well, and I could talk about the low group. So in my group, I'm going to be doing a group with the three rotation. And because we have several students that have scored low enough to be eligible to get title services, but of course, we can't service all of those students in title because title has a cap of how many students they can take, we will be doing some of the same things, FastBridge interventions, the FastBridge testing. We'll be doing the interventions in my low group and in the other group's low group. So they will actually be getting FastBridge interventions in our low group, hoping that that will help to bring them up. So in essentially, we're being kind of like a pseudo-title teacher and doing those same things with them, hoping that they, we've seen good growth with those title interventions in title. And so we thought that that would be a great way for us to help those students since they would be title-eligible if we were able to service that many students.
Mr. Berg asked me to talk about the first grade because I'm one of the high group teachers. And on the other end, we are making sure that those kids who are on or above continue to grow and they aren't just happily sitting there. So we have planned that those kiddos will be working on their reading fluency, their comprehension. And then just to add a little bit of fun and flair, they're also going to be doing readers' theaters, which I plan to then record and share out so the other classmates can see their peers performing. So maybe we'll even help out with the arts a little.
Thank you.
Is there, I'm not sure if I'm going to word this right, but is there anything that we track growth in as far as behaviors? And I'm just going to use this as an example because I don't know what else to use. But like for a student as a kindergartner, the beginning of school, who really struggled maybe staying in class all day or half a day, and by spring is able to stay in that class longer without any behaviors. Maybe we talk a lot about social emotional learning. Do we monitor growth in that area for any of our students? Or is it not really able to?
So at this point, we don't really have a great data-tracking tool, per se. But within our student support meetings, we're revisiting students throughout the year, keeping notes, keeping track. Like this last year from our student support meetings, I took all of the notes that we had from our meetings, passed those along to Greenhaven. And you do look at notes and dates, and you get to see for the vast majority, a progression. Like I said earlier, we don't have a specific data-tracking tool at this point, but that's what we've come up with, and a lot of narrative notes.
DJ, I got one question. Oh, sorry. Is there any way that, when we look at the numbers here, we hit the numbers, you know, how our high school students are doing? And we compare those to other schools?
Yeah.
Can we do this? Or do we have any numbers that show us how Chizam and Cherry and Manchuck are doing? That's this type of depends.
We specifically picked the 50th percentile because that equates to something relatively close to what is expected for MCA's. So when we first started with FastBridge, their breakdown of a child attending or attaining, being higher than some risk on the chart, on the graphics, they selected 40%. So we've upped that ante at the 50th percentile because we expect our kids to achieve higher levels and hopefully attain better once they get to MCA rigor. Anything you like to add?
And just to add to that, I mean, not every school district does FastBridge or uses FastBridge and use other assessments. So it's not apples-to-apples, always? Am I saying that right, Carrie? Like the?
These are national percentiles. So this is comparing our kids with all the kids in the nation that take the FastBridge test. So it's not just like the number of kids above the 50th percentile in our school. It's the number of kids nationally above the 50th percentile.
And I'm assuming we have a big population of our student body in 11th and 12th that they don't test.
We try really hard this year to get our PSEO kids, online kids in, to require them to test this year.
And we try, we make every effort to test all children. And we do, we have some students that are nonverbal. But there's at least a concerted effort to partner with them, whether they can give us a response by touch or indication of what an answer might be as we go through the test. The staff sit down with each student.
It's not a computerized test. It's a one-on-one. We have to administer it. So that helps when you have a student that is nonverbal. It's not just on a computer like an MCA.
Yeah, no, it's fine. You have some of your staff here. I guess I'd like to ask them and you personally, you know, we heard so much about COVID, the damage it's done for, you know, the young kids. Now you're saying that we're kind of getting out of that? We're kind of getting, seeing a little light at the end of the tunnel?
Well, 2020 kind of hit us all. Now we're 2025. So those that were born in 2020, a lot of people were pretty sheltered. And you see the impacts in a lot of the social emotional areas. They may not have been able to experience things out in our community. I know with my own grandchild or grandchildren, my daughter's taking them to everything under the sun. And during those times, you just couldn't do those things. Those are all prior knowledge skills that kids acquired. And unfortunately, weren't able to do some of those things early on. So it's, it's nice to see some of that rebounding. But I can't attribute all of that to that. Would like to think so, just because they, they were very sheltered and not a lot of opportunities to get out into the community and do things that on a typical year you can't, so. Anything else?
Carrie, I'm still gravitating here on 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. For the, do we have anything kind of longitudinal? So for students who are in 11th and 12th grade, anything where we can compare their results as a group? Where they were in 10th grade? And then where they, where they are in 11th and 12th grade? And break it out by PSEO track versus non-PSE? She's smiling, I don't know what that means. Versus non-PSE o-track?
Can I interject?
Go ahead.
All right. So we haven't been in the FastBridge business for a real long time. This is something four years ago, Carrie?
Yep. And high school just started it.
Five years?
Two years?
Because we, we actually had during COVID. So during that time, we also adjusted some of the percentile rates and lessened those to 40th percentile to go naturally. And since that, I want to say three years now, we've been at the 50th percentile and are sticking with that. So hopefully, we'll have a lot more longitudinal data as kids progress through this. And it's nice to see that we're using FastBridge as a district, not just at the elementaries. Previously, schools would use something like NWEA or Ames Web. Where was the other one we had?
STAR.
STAR testing. So we did STAR testing for a number of years, transitioned out of that into FastBridge.
And I'm asking the question because, right, like at 10th grade, I mean, there are a few PSEOs, but by and large, they're in our school, right? And there's a couple of paths. One's staying in our school and one's not. I'd just be interested in learning what the results look like once they down those two paths, I'll go compare.
I think eventually, we'll be able to disaggregate a lot more data as we get more data year after year.
And I will send all of you the data by grade level so you can see kindergarten first, second, because this is, this is district data.
And I don't want to, because I know my colleagues are going to come in on different dates later to talk about, you know, high school and don't really want to steal their thunder yet either as they go through their data, so.
Thank you, Mr. Berg.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all of your staff, too. Awesome to see the buy-in and the excitement. Very cool.
I'm going to interject because when you ask a question about 11th and 12th grade of the PSEO versus being in school and getting that social academic that you get here being in the school, the students are doing the PSEO are not getting that same.
Okay. Thank you.
You know how I feel.
Hello? You might remember me from formerly as high school. Now I'm down at the Lincoln with Ms. Husko here. Before we get into the data and our, our stuff, we're just going to share some of the, some of the other happenings that have been going on in our building. It's been a really awesome start of the year working with this group of kids. And, you know, a big shout out to the PTO for all they do. They funded the Ninja Everywhere to come in first couple of weeks of school for all of our kids to go out there, enjoy the nice weather, get some energy out, disrupt gardening a little bit, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And then we had our students go over to the STEM showcase over at the memorial building. So that was really cool for all the hands-on. All the kids were coming back with these yellow hard hats. Like, what's going on? No hats, no hats, no hats. But then I realized what was going on. And then also, we have the crescendo strings come in, Julie Tychan, and to show all of the fourth graders the opportunities with our community string program. And then also, a couple of new things we have in the works here. Mrs. Feiger, she's from her DCE students. And the PSAs have started Ability Brews. And it's a coffee and refreshment cart that they go through the school and take orders from staff members and deliver light refreshments, coffees, and little treats to the teachers and really brighten up the building and gives these kids chances to build some life skills, interact with staff members, take orders, have that responsibility. It's just a really cool thing that Mrs. Feiger's showing up now for PSAs do. Also, something new this year is the After School Study Club that started in collaboration with some of our high school groups. So we've got students from the high schools NHS Society, our key club in Alford Mountain, are coming in two days a week after school to do tutoring and homework help in the cafeteria. So all of those advisors have been really, really great to work with. We have a signup sheet so that there's at least one to two or sometimes three high school students in the cafeteria. And any kid could come with any subject or anything they need with, and have them help out. There are some kids that came up to me yesterday. It was Tuesday. I tried to show you what day it was. They're like, are the high schoolers going to be there today? I really need help with that. I said, they're going to be there. Don't worry. They just have to walk over here after school. So they were ready to go. And then also in the works is a Lincoln Student Leadership Club. I'd like to bring back getting some of our young students involved with some leadership possibilities down at the Lincoln so that when it translates over to the high school with student council that we have here. So that's in the works. It's not happening yet, but I've already had students come to us with some great ideas. One kid came to me that he's like, we don't do any recycling here. He's like, you know, we could set up a can thing, we could recycle can. He's like, my dad knows a guy who knows a guy who takes the cans. We could get some money. And I said, now we're talking, buddy. Let's make this happen. So again, it's quite the buzz. And then another cool thing, you know, you see it on the wall, the blue jacket pride. We have a lot of blue jacket pride at the Lincoln. And Ms. Husko and I, our focus for the month of October is really focusing on the R for respect. And not just respect for the teachers, but respect for your classmates, respect for your staff, respect for your parents or guardians, and respect for yourself. So when the staff are watching our students in all the different capacities, whether it be recess, or lunch, or in-class, or in the halls, they're looking out for students who are showing respect, showing the blue jacket pride. who are showing respect, showing the Blue Jacket Pride, and then they're recognizing the certificates up on the wall. And at the end of the month, we pull them off the wall, put them on a hat, and we had Ms. Siski at the front desk pulling out, and then that kid got DoorDash from us. So, you know, we pulled that girl's name, and she came down, and she came up right up to me and was like, I want hearties, ham and cheese sandwich, curly fries, and a vanilla milkshake. I was like, awesome, sounds good, tomorrow. And she was just raving about, she was just so excited to call home and tell the family that she got recognized by a staff member for showing Blue Jacket Pride. So just these little things that we want to celebrate, the positives as well in our school. Back to the data.
Yeah, same, yeah, same charts that you guys saw and asked questions with, we're doing district-wide goals, so same stuff that we saw from BJ. And then at the Lincoln, we brought our district leadership team also. We have the same attributes, our priorities as well, so I'm just going to introduce them and see if they wanted to say anything more about it. It's all basically the same throughout the district, though. So I don't know if you guys just want to stand up or come up here, maybe come up here so you can be heard.
Will you introduce yourselves?
Sure. Hi, I'm Christina Magidly White side. Washington did such a great job talking about win time. The only thing I'd add is I know for my group in fifth grade, we incorporated win from the get-go in September, and even though we didn't have FastBridge results at the time, we were able to do like one-on-one meetings, whether it's looking over rubrics for writing projects, or students who maybe struggled with certain skills on their September book report, and they really got that one-on-one or small group, we did some focus skill work. So just having that win time in there from the get-go was really nice.
I'm Stacy Hookah, I'm now at the Lincoln, super excited about it. I have the privilege this year of teaching two classes of CEL, a group, the whole sixth grade, third hour, and then a group of seventh grade, fourth hour, and Jen Hiltner is also teaching CEL to fourth and fifth grade. So we're working together, kind of planning together, it's a new thing, building those relationships along with, we're looking at doing a mental health campaign like we did at the high school here last year with, with students at the Lincoln, so addressing it that way, trying to make our way through the cafeteria, save hallways. Shout out to my pride ticket winner, I was the first, I first, she was the first girl that I put up on the, the wall for the Blue, I said Blue Street, Blue Jacket Pride. And she was, she was flexing her hearties to all her friends. So, yeah, any questions for me on the mental health, social emotional learning piece? Again, everyday speech as they used, and yeah, I'm super excited to be meeting lots of tiny humans.
Stacy, how, just curious, how's it received by the students? Seventh graders, how do they, in the SEL time that you have with them, how do they receive it? Do they enjoy the time?
I have never taught it before, so I approached it, first of all, as them getting to know each other, getting to know me, a safe place, and kind of building it that way, explaining that we're kind of building it together. And, and, and I think it's going as well as it can be, that they have to be with me for an hour. Same thing with the sixth grade, it's a much bigger group, but I don't know most of the kids, so they, again, feel it's a safe place. I have kids showing up who I normally might not show up to class some days, so I, I think, in my opinion, I'm loving it. It feels good for me, they seem to be feeling the same about it, so. Does that make sense?
It, it does. I just, I'm just picturing, you know, seventh graders, just a group of seventh graders and sitting around talking about feelings and, you know, I just, I wonder how that, what it looks like in a classroom, do they, do they accept it lonely?
Shockingly enough, they raise, they raise their hands and they share.
And participate, that's awesome.
And it's about things that they might not know about each other. Today I had a group that normally typically wouldn't associate with each other outside of the classroom, so.
One good thing that Mrs. Hookah helped organize, and I forgot to share this, she did this with her, her SEL class. We had a seventh grader who had a health complication that couldn't be with us for the first few weeks of school, and so Mrs. Husko organized a hat fundraiser. And in one of her first, like, kind of introductory class with, with the seventh graders, we talked about this student and with the need, their family being down in the cities, and so the kids were designing posters and sticker, and get cards for the student, too.
Ms. Siski's class, yes.
So they were, they were really rounding it together, we, we were able to collect over three hundred dollars to, to give to this family to help offset like gas, gas needs, grocery costs of going down to the city. So that's just one of the very first things that we kicked off with that, you know, the SEL was like, hey, we're here to support a classmate who's going through a medical
Friday, and they chose two dollars to wear a hat, and the student ended up coming on Friday. So then they got to, the students got to be very excited about that, and were prideful.
Yeah, cool. I've got you.
You brought up the seventh graders, I think, seventh grade, I mean, having three kids, boys and a girl, as a parent, do you find that girls participate more than boys when it comes to discussion? Or do you see no difference?
They all do, in my opinion, yeah, both, which is pretty cool. And that knowing me, I think, so, yeah, it's been good.
Thank you.
I am Amy Cavish, and I'm a special education teacher at the Lincoln. And we are, we have implemented the Tier Two and Tier Three support meetings that is new at our building this year. In the past, we've just had a special referral team. And the one thing that I have heard since the first Tier Two meeting was that everybody really liked having someone from every grade level represented and all the specialists, because everybody had input to give to a teacher regarding a student, whether they had had them before or after.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so that's it for the Lincoln, so now I'm just going to jump in, I just added the Early Learning Center right to this slideshow. So my district leadership team's a little bit smaller, being we have less staff, so I have Emily Rudolph, who is one of our early childhood specialist teachers, who also fills in for me when I'm at the Lincoln. And then we have Courtney Inman, who is also on our team, but she has young kids who are in sports after school, so she was unable to come. So a lot of these are the same, because they're district-wide priorities that Kerry has set up in, as a district, so that is great. We, too, have SEL everyday speech. Gloria Allison is our specialist teacher, so she teaches this to the kids every day throughout the week. She has a forty-two-minute class session with each of the four classes, and then the classroom teachers are to piggyback off that as well. And our spread staff also has access to everyday speech, where they can use it in small group instruction and different things like that as well. One of the other things that Kerry has implemented as a priority is a district level literacy framework. We don't do FastBridge data at the ELC, we use creative curriculum in TS Gold data and assessment, so that's kind of how we're basing our literacy framework. And we're taking our TS Gold data to make our goals, where they use FastBridge to make their goals. So in TS Gold, we have different areas that they focus on, and this year we're going to really focus on the social emotional and the literacy part of it. So last year, the, our, our goal was eighty percent of kids at a program to meet or exceed the social emotional, and we scored a ninety-two percent last year. We had a really good group of kids last year. So our new goal, our data's not in yet, we do it a little bit different, we do it three times a year as well, but we have bigger windows. So our teachers' data is due on November seventh, for conference, and they'll share that data at conferences. So we're looking for about a ninety-five percent kids meeting that social emotional goal, depending, of course, on our fall data. It's a different group of kids, so you never kind of know what you're going to get. And then literacy, ninety-two percent was our last year's goal, and we got a ninety-five percent last year, so we increased a lot in both areas, so that was great. We're going to shoot for ninety-eight percent for our literacy goal this fall, or for this coming year, depending on our fall data, of course. So in our next presentation for the board, we'll have more accurate data for this year's students. We have our Tier Two and Tier Three meetings that Emily and I run, same things that they do at the other schools. In the past at the ELC, we had only met once a month, but we kind of did both weekdays at that time, a referral and a child study meeting. So this is a little bit new for us, but we also have the entire grade level, it's a little bit different there, where like at the Lincoln, we probably have ten people at the meeting, at the ELC, we have about four, because we only have so many staff available, so. But they do too like the more people there that are classroom teachers, and the spread resources there, too, to talk about different strategies and interventions that can be used, even if they don't have that kid, they might have ideas to help with that. And then, of course, we're also implementing a new teacher feedback model that a couple of districts are implementing as well. I just threw in a couple extra slides. We are full in our Ready Set Go classes, and we are twenty-five in our half-day preschool, half-day threes class. We have a couple of spots in our half-day threes class, but we haven't filled them due to student-teacher ratio. We just want to make sure that we had enough adults in the classroom to fill those, because we have a couple busy kids in the morning class, especially when everyone wants that morning section, and we just want to make sure we have enough support in there to accommodate those. So, but the Ready Set Go classes is where we get that EPK funding from, so that's important that we have those, we do have those. And then just a few upcoming dates, the Washington PTO, the Lincoln ELC PTO, present a fall festival, we have our second screening date coming up within October, and then we have conferences coming up, so. Any questions that you have for myself or Emily?
Yeah, can you go back to the slide that has the percentages, your goals? So, now, for your percentages here, is this the growth just for strictly our ELC? Like, you're not doing any comparison where the other, for them, they were saying that is nationally, okay? Because when I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, well, why can your numbers be so high and the other ones be so low? So, okay, thank you.
Man, off topic a little bit, Head Start, do you, you know what's going on there with the shutdown is, are they, business as usual, have you talked to Gabe at all?
He was there today, but I did not talk to him. Did you talk to him at all? Yeah, so, I think he would have called and told me if something major was going to come on, or come and see me when he was there today, so.
And I think last time they survived, you know, they went thirty-five days, last shutdown, and they survived it, or however, you know, they didn't have to close or didn't shut. I'm just curious, you know, I heard today, you know, people aren't getting paid, and I don't know if that's funding that comes metered, or if they just get that chunk in the beginning of the year?
Well, I know, like, at the end of the school year, they had, their fiscal years are different than ours, and they were set with funding through October, I think, so I don't know if that was different then, but their staff is still there to work, so I'm assuming they're getting paid, and Gabe didn't say anything, so.
I'll, I'll reach out, I'm just curious, I'm sure that's a fear that they have, that both parents and plan for that, and that daycare, and that, that service that you're getting, it could be a real disruption, so. And we did, just, since we're talking about it, Head Start's numbers are down quite a bit. We met with Gabe earlier in the year, Mandy and I, and he's just concerned about birth rates, just, there's just less younger kids in the community to attend. They're, they're down quite a bit, right? They're twenty kids, maybe, I think, twenty, thirty kids last year?
Yeah, so they wanted to know if we had any in our waitlist that they could potentially grab, but we don't have any in our waitlist, so.
And that's a concern for us, because, you know, we hope that those, whatever numbers at Head Start is going to roll into our kindergarten for next year, so that's, that's a concern. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ellen.
You know, I just want to reiterate, thank you to all of you for coming today. This is wonderful, and, you know, just seeing the goals and what you've achieved with the earliest learners, that's so important. It just sets the foundation for future success and just the social emotional supports we're providing our kids are just, it's amazing. So thank you to everybody.
Very good, thank you. Item C, committee reports. Sure, none, they'll do item four or five, I mean, motion to approve the agenda. Hold on. Four, by Director Polster, supported by Director Egan, any discussion?
On number E, Mr. Anderson's resignation of Coach Watanovsky, going to be on the press on court?
How, how, I'm sorry, Mr. Egan?
Under E, except for the.
Okay, the kid from Mr. Anderson stepping down from ESSA?
Yeah, so we just have him on Coach Watanovsky.
So that's part of the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All the fairer say aye?
Aye.
For the same sign, motion Kerry, thank you. With that, we'll move to item six, the motion to approve the consent agenda. By Director Polster, supported by Director Sarah.
Can we, can we pull?
Any discussion?
Yeah, can we pull item H, just for purposes of discussion, so we have an understanding of what the process is going to be going forward?
Sure. And then, would you like to pull it in there?
I've already.
Okay, we'll discuss.
I, I assume that'll be under the winter coaches discussion, so.
Yes.
You made that discussion up?
Would you like me to give a little update on, on the coaches, or?
Yeah, we got to, I appreciate our athletic director putting together a matrix of winter coaches and positions that are going to be school-funded, booster-funded, school-booster-funded. And there were many positions in here that are still unfilled or to be determined. My first concern is background checks, that we have background checks, but also, what's the expectation? So where, for example, there's a whole group that's to be determined, are those names going to come back to the board for approval?
Yes, and I, I just gave my good list to Mr. Egan, but I'm going to stand quick and take a look, so the to-be-determined items, the Alpine head coach, the girls hockey positions, boys' basketball positions, Mr. Pleas told me today that those are filled, and he, our plan is to bring this document back to you at the next court date with those changes, highlighted changes, and then we just keep this document rolling as it, as it changes for your approval. So again, those positions, according to James, have been interviewed for and are filled. There's still a couple that are outstanding, some of those basketballs outstanding, the boys are outstanding, the boys' swimming is outstanding, but ski, hockey, basketball, he said was filmed as of yesterday, with the recommendations.
Yes, so I see Director Egan squinting at this list, and I just did this in sharing it with the group, because we were provided with the con, the list, no, of, of, for the contract, there are certain coaching positions. And then we were given this matrix. So just because I'm a visual person, I had to put together the two lists and see where they align and where they don't align, just to get a better understanding of what's school-funded, what's booster-funded, what's vacant, and then in that middle column where there's like three names highlighted in blue, those are the people that, based on my recollection, were school district employees, just because we always talk about the importance of having our teachers connecting with our athletes outside of the core of the ring. So I just, I just wanted to see where things were at, so I might share it.
He's not the only one squinting, I think, maybe the bigger font there, even.
I just wanted to get it on one page, that's why.
It is nice to see this, I'll thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Very good, say it.
I can email it to you to draw it up.
I got him on, I. Mr. Egan, the wrestling, he's here, Ms. Hope Cooper. And so we have some girls wrestlers, too, so it works out a lot.
Okay, all the fairer say aye?
Aye.
For the same sign, motion Kerry, thank you. With that, we'll move to item seven, administrative business. Alex, you live in here, Superintendent Rick?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Item A is a motion to approve item five to Max A, Max Grade Construction in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, ninety-four cents for work completed on the Greenhaven renovation project. Hold on.
Support.
supported by Director Polster, supported by Director Egan, any discussion?
Do we know if we're still on target to do the gymnasium during MAA?
We are, yes. We are, yes. ME is up next weekend, two minutes, two minutes. Fourteenth, fifteenth, fifteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay.
So, then will it be completed after the gymnasium?
I believe, I believe so. I mean, so in this, you know, again, there's probably another payment coming. I think we're probably one more payment, then the retainage. They'll have to go through to all their punchless items, Tyler will have to go walk through what went down. There's always cleanup at the end of things that he finds that need to be corrected. But yes, they're very close to completion.
Well, and again, those to Tyler and his group, because if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like our change orders are still in our favor, negative.
Thank you, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
You know what, and it's a beautiful facility. I've got questions for people in the community. Is the plan still to have some sort of an open house once it's completed?
Yes. And Mr. Vestal and staff there, in the whole remodel and the packing, they found a time capsule from Mr. Carney, who just recently passed. He was, I'm not sure the grade level, but my sister was actually in the class in the time capsule. She's, they've got a school picture, you know, the real kid's photo on the, on the box.
Maybe younger, I thought, but...
Maybe not, maybe not. But either way, Bob is somehow trying to tie that in and trying to bring those kids back and open up that time capsule and make it kind of fun. So, it's coming, it's coming very soon. But he, again, he wants, he wanted that gym finished and the epoxy board now to be able to let Mace open house.
And I think we did that at the Washington, right? It was open in the time capsule.
Two separate events. We had a board meeting at the Washington after renovations, and then also had a time capsule opening. I want to say the same year, but yeah, we had two separate events going on.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B is a motion to adopt the resolution appointing election judges for the November 4th, 2025 school district special election.
So...
Mumbai Director Sarah, supported by Director Mike. I think we will for a role called one of his, he was elected during the election time. Director Polter?
Yes.
Director Mike?
Yes.
Director Sarah?
Yes.
Director Kim?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes.
Well, you can see the list, but the judges are gonna be...
Sorry, there are, there's a list in your packet I can share with you here. Yeah, you just have the agenda, you don't have the full packet, but I'll share that with you. And I also just wanted to say that within the resolution that you approved, Alex is our clerk, Alex Hayes is our election clerk, and he might have to make some substitutions. You know, somebody might call a sick, something might happen. He has that discretion now, after you've approved the process for election judges. So, that list, you know, there could be a few less on it, or it could be a different name, just depending on what happens between now and the election. But that's, we wouldn't bring that, that change back to you. It might happen, you know, in an off week prior to the election, so.
So, there's a lot of election judges on this list. They're not all...
No, it's a little bit of a safety net, right? It's who might be available, but again, there could be a change to that between now and November, but it would only be if somebody had to drop off for some reason.
Okay, the record will show it, it's unanimous. I hope item C.
Okay, thank you. Item C is a motion to accept the notice of termination for the contract between IST number 701 and Choice Therapy for Physical and Occupational Therapy Services effective October 20th, 2025. So, move.
Support.
Mumbai Director Jeff, supported by Director Kim, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination and to direct the superintendent to submit the report as provided by Minnesota statutes and rules. Over.
Support.
Mumbai Director Jeff, supported by Director Kim, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item E.
Director Bertis?
Yes.
Since I got flustered, I forgot to ask, approve the posting for the district plumber?
I apologize for doing that to you.
That's okay. The posting for the district plumber, is that gonna be licensed plumber? Journeyman license?
Yes, yeah. So, we had started, we were, we posted initially apprentice, journeyman. After talking with the union, we're gonna, we're gonna shoot for the fully licensed. We corrected that, that posting. I think I shared with you in an email that we're not super confident that we're gonna get somebody to apply. But you never know, never know the situation and people's schedules, but it's definitely needed position in the district. Lots of, lots of time spent working on lavatories and sinks. There's so much water moving in this district that there's lots of things that break down.
So, Sharon, you know, like, our academic folks have a dream, right? They have a big, like, wild idea or goal. I shared with Superintendent Aldrich yesterday, and I see that Gary is still here. I mean, like, how cool would that be if we could have one or two of our students through the career academies be mentored by our school district plumber, I don't know. Electrician, you know, like, could, could this, this be one of the sites?
You're gonna run into a union problem.
Union, meaning our union or?
Or is it that they're a union, 5A high, I would assume it would be a problem, unless you hire a non-ite or a union plumber with the journeyman license, and he could, he could train.
But we'd actually get an apprenticeship program.
But they'll all look at it as an apprenticeship program, because they're working with a journeyman licensed plumber.
Well, I don't have the answers, but wouldn't it be cool if we could give our students an opportunity to gain work experience in our own district, in certain districts? It was just a thought.
And we have actually had, we call it a sha, they're shadowing, so it's not as much like an apprenticeship, but more of a job shadow. We have had people job shadow our electrician. I don't know if I'm breaking the rules or not, but typically, it's a one or two day experience, so they can see what that's like.
That's wonderful.
Mr. Aldrich, I did have, I did get to speak with Tyler Block on the phone yesterday about this. I had some questions, but one of the questions that I have today that I didn't have yesterday, maybe you'll know the answer to. So, worst case, we don't find a qualified applicant. Is this something then where we go for quotes, you know, around the area and we guarantee so and so, you know, 300 hours? Or is it just gonna be as needed and this is hourly rate? How does that work?
In all, my personal opinion, I think we'd be better off if we went with a part-time. And if, or same guy, and instead of doing 40 hours a week, he does 20 hours a week. I know why Mr. Blake had to leave. Yeah, I just think that because he's familiar with everything here, he's familiar with Tyler and how things operate, that maybe if he interested, I don't know if it's or not, that there might be an opportunity to have him come in 20 hours a week. Because most of the problems that have to be resolved here are in the morning. You know, afternoons are pretty, pretty quiet, it makes it less, less something major. So, that might be an avenue that you'd be able to, to go after, so.
That's something that we talked about a little bit too, if, you know, and I think, again, we're doing due diligence from a post, we try to find somebody. If that doesn't work out, we may reach out to Sean and see if he has an interest in doing something like that. But I think you're absolutely right. If, like, that scenario doesn't work, right? Or we're looking at, we need to get somebody in here on a regular basis. And we look for some bids from some of our local contractors to, you know, is it just, is it gonna be at 150 bucks an hour? Or can we get 1,000 hours of work for a, for a set dollar a month? You know, that's, I think, what we would hope for. It does have, you know, if there's some other union, ask me things to consider there, right? It's a position within their bargaining unit that we'd have to kind of work through some of those issues, but yes. And we do use, we do use local plumbers now to help support Sean and some of the work that he does. And I think like the conversation you had with Tyler yesterday, very expensive. I mean, we're getting a very good deal with Sean and the services he provides in comparison to somebody private. But yes, at the end of the day, I think, you know, we probably really have to prioritize our needs and what we're gonna spend those resources on, that's, might not be replacing some things more for aesthetics. It's just gonna be out of necessity, so.
And it's not just the high school?
Oh, right, it's Cheever, it's everything, it's all of our facilities, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, item A, discussion items, Superintendent Rick?
I just want to give just an update on the referendum. Since we've met last time, I've had a number of different community engagements. Most exciting was probably doing Mr. Egan's show. Lots of fame, lots of accolades came up.
I think our viewing audience went from four to five.
What is the link code? I was told that it's...
I haven't seen it yet. I think they've had trouble with their email, I think HPA and sending it.
It's on E.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's gonna go to their website.
Yeah. We had another meeting yesterday with, and I'm gonna get the group wrong, but it's a philanthropic entrepreneurs organization, I believe is the term. And it's a group of ladies here in town, we met at the St. Episcopal Church, just straight across the street. Just 15 to 20 people, Mr. Gabardi and I, his mother-in-law, Mrs. Andricken is one of those, is a member of this group. And just, again, just a very supportive conversation. They asked lots of questions, got lots of information, a lot of, oh, I didn't know that, oh, really? Like, just, you know, when you have those conversations with folks on how we're funded and how, their perception and what the reality is, definitely two different things. But again, it was a good meeting, and we've got a few more of those scheduled here coming up. But we're, you know, we're three weeks away from actual vote. It's, it's really went past. It's amazing how quickly this time goes by.
Are you seeing good numbers as far as early voting? Are people participating in that?
Well, and I don't know the count today, because Alex was out and we had, because we had in-service earlier this week, we had quite a few staff members come over, but I think it's 50 came and voted on Monday, I believe. So, you know, we were, why, why am I guessing? You gotta bet you you know. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, Thursday, last Thursday, we were at 84. And then we've got, I, I collected them today, and there was probably, with the mail-ins and people down there, probably about 15, 17 today. So, we're definitely over 100. I don't have the exact number, but yeah.
And if you do that, you even get a sticker. So, I encourage people to do that.
It hasn't been a rush that we, you know, we, I think we were anticipating more and more, like, more of a distraction throughout the day of people coming and going, but it hasn't been a huge rush, I don't think.
No, I don't think, I mean, I think downstairs they get more than, you know, up here, but yeah, it's been going well.
We do, you know, also in helping out with Dr. Egan and doing the show at HPA. I just want to thank Ron at HPA. He's, he was very helpful, he's very flexible, right? And timing, we had to cancel, we had to come back, we had issues, and he's just good to work with and supportive. And thank Gary too, even though Gary left halfway through our, an emergency of some kind. But just thank you for, to both of you for allowing me to do that, so thank you. But that's, that's really all I have, Mr. Chair, unless you have any questions of me.
Yeah, can I just clarify for, primarily for the public, but what question that kind of keeps coming up is the whole concept of HR in our district? And I just want to make sure that people know, and we have a lot of employees, just with the total number of district employees who receive mandated reporter training is 290. But I don't know if the total count is today.
It's just under 500.
Right. So, one of the things that our superintendent's office does is they do all the human resource work for our district, which is huge. And I think, I think that when people ask what the superintendent's office does, and I said, you know, they're also responsible for human resource administration, and in the public sector, it's way different than in a private setting. And I've gotten a lot of, oh, we didn't know that, so, you know, that would be good for the community to know. So, I'm just clarifying that all our human resources handles out of our superintendent's office, we don't have a CHRO.
I encourage people to, if you have a question, call somebody. There's so much speculation out there on social media, and it is 99.9% false and negative. Pick up the phone, contact a board member, contact principals, contact the superintendent's office, because there you're gonna get the right answer, instead of your friend on social media who really doesn't know what to talk to him about.
This is what I heard, you know?
Yeah, I keep hearing that. If I heard this, or I heard that, but it's all fake, it's all fake. I've had quite a few phone calls. I've had lots of submissions on our website, just emails where people can ask a question. And they've really been pretty well received. I don't know that I, you know, I don't know if that's my duty. Again, I'm providing information, but some folks, they're, you know, this is a new tax, I'm gonna vote no. And I'll reply back, you know, I suppose if you'd like more information, I'm here to support you or respect your decision, I have a few of those. But most have been interactive in responses back and forth. And then, I think probably at least half, probably 30 or 40 that I've received recently, we follow up, I have a phone conversation. I'll say, just, could you call me? You know, rather than going back and forth and, and those go very well, those go very well, yeah. What I, what I see is, I see some folks that will say, well, I don't know what's going on with your referendum. But if you don't read the paper, if you, if you're on the internet in any shape or form, you probably don't know. And I don't know how, you know, going out and shaking those folks and saying, hey, I mean, you'd have to do a little research, I think, then. There's been some stuff in the paper, there's been... Everybody's got two mailings, so... The mailings that have gone, yeah, so...
It's likely if those people, they probably won't vote at all.
I agree.
You know, so it's kind of a wash, right?
I agree, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I want everybody to vote, but if they don't know, they more than likely won't even vote.
Right, right. I just, I think, you know, we've done a very good job of getting it out about our referendum. I just hate to have somebody say, oh, I didn't even know you had it. And I think that's not a very valid argument, with, with all the information that we put out, so.
But if it would be helpful, I would be more than happy to participate in any kind of roundtable conversation. If there's people in the community who feel it would be helpful, I don't want people, I want people to vote based on the most accurate information we can provide, right? Like, and not misinformation. So, if we can, if that would be helpful.
Are there, isn't there something on the radio that's called Community Watch that's free? That you could, are you gonna do that? Is there a referendum notice on the radio?
Nothing that we put out, but yeah.
It's gotta be two weeks prior to the USA Radio.
Thank you, thank you. We, you know, I think we did that, no, we did that with Early Learning Center. Kirk and I met with Scott, we did a little radio spot with him. That's a good point, I'm gonna check into that, and then I'm gonna stop talking. Director Mike? Well, Mike, we did a talk show or something on a radio, just a...
Yeah, maybe it was a radio.
Or, they did an interview with us on the radio live that one morning. And I think they replayed it some times in the week, yeah.
I just want to make one comment, to piggyback off of what Ken said earlier about our HR. This board had talked about hiring an HR. We couldn't afford to hire an HR. So, those individuals that are complaining about how much our superintendent gets paid and how much our administration teams are paid, doesn't realize the money we're actually saving by them assuming those responsibilities, so it's hard to hint.
PR, everybody else is...
And what it costs you if you have somebody where you're not compliant?
Right. Professional services. Director Polter?
Motion for adjournment.
Without objection, the meeting's adjourned. Without objection, the meeting is adjourned, it's four forty, just a vote. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and being here.
Hibbing Public Access TV may be viewed on these platforms. HPAT.org with video on demand. MediaCom Hibbing, eight oh two, eight oh five, and eight oh seven. On Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Download the Hibbing Public Access TV app for your iPhone and Android devices. Find us on Facebook, YouTube, and Vimeo. For more information, scan the QR code, go to HPAT.org. Hibbing Public Access Television would like to thank MediaCom for all the years they have supported our organization. Visit their office at thirty-one oh five East Beltline, Suite Number Two, here in Hibbing. And give them a call at eight five five, six three three, four two two six. For over twenty-five years, US Bank, located at two eleven East Howard Street in Hibbing, Minnesota, has provided office and studio space for Hibbing Public Access Television. We are thankful for their ongoing support.